Mark de Laverne influence.
Okay, folks, I think we're ready. All right, I think we're settling down. Um, I will call the November eleventh, twenty twenty-five Pleasant Ridge City Commission meeting to order. Can we have the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Can we have roll call?
Mayor Scott?
Here.
Commissioner Budnick?
Here.
Commissioner Lenko?
Here.
Commissioner Perry?
Here.
Commissioner Schmier?
Here.
Awesome. Uh, I guess we're on to public discussion.
Okay, good evening, Mayor, Commission, uh, staff, visitors, and congratulations.
Thank you.
And, um, I have a short, um, a short, uh, presentation. The American Sign Language, uh, is going strong and on Wednesdays, we have some younger, younger people attending too, which is really great. Uh, number two, storytelling in Ferndale is also going very strong. It's, uh, going for a, a year and a half now. We get about eight, nine people at each, uh, Thursday afternoon meeting. So it's really good. I like it. Now, uh, regarding the environment that I'm concerned about a lot is, uh, the results are the, um, of the butternut squash competition is, uh, here. Okay, plus pumpkin.
Good job.
The two thousand twenty-five pumpkin growing champion goes to Mike Kay.
Really? How much did it weigh?
Fifteen pounds he's got this year.
Right on.
Now, the butternut squash competition, uh, third place is Pat Zentick at nine pounds.
Nice.
Second place is Carol Gutile at twelve pounds. And first place, Ted Zachary, had fifty-nine pounds.
How much?
Fifty-nine.
Fifty-nine pounds, uh, not just one.
Okay.
It's many, and the, the secret is to have many plants.
Oh.
Have sun and water.
Yeah.
And my, I wonder what the visual aid would be.
Uh-oh.
This is, uh, an eight pounder. That's my, uh, my visual aid. And some are smaller, which is handy, but when I looked at, um, Trader Joe's today, these are going for two, two dollars a pound.
What?
So this would be sixteen dollars.
Wow.
So concerning the environment, you don't have to drive to the store to buy one, you can just go in your backyard.
Right.
And remember, it's pesticide-free, um.
You know what went in it.
Oh, no, no, that's more healthy.
Yeah.
Any questions?
No.
Congratulations.
Yeah, congrats.
Thank you, thank you, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other public items? No? All right, let's have the liaison reports. Commissioner Schmier? Oh, sorry.
No, thank you. Thank you, Mayor. Um, historical commission, the museum will be open this Saturday, um, from ten until noon. Um, I was ju- I just found out that the, uh, Holiday Village was actually set up earlier this year, so it will be open and it will be available to see this Saturday. So anyone who's interested in seeing the Christmas Village or checking out your home file, the museum will be open. Also in December and at the next meeting, I'll, uh, let you know the dates, but it will be open multiple times, including the tree lighting. So people can come check out the museum at that time also.
Thank you.
That was all I have. Thank you.
All right, Commissioner Budnick?
Thank you, Mayor. Where shall we start? You know, we, the Recreation Commission met last week in October. And one of the few things we discussed in some detail was the pool data. So I wanted to share just some interesting data that we discussed amongst the group. Any guess on the, what the top five streets would be for attendance to the pool? And these are not unique households, this is just total visits.
Oakdale's at the top?
Number, uh, number three.
Okay.
Very good. Number one, yours truly, I think I. I just attribute that to my family.
You guys are riddled with children on that street.
We are riddled with children.
Can I guess Woodside? I mean, is Woodside up there?
They're not.
You would think they'd just like right, right there. No?
No, they don't even make the top ten.
Really?
Yeah.
Kensington on there at all?
No, that's gonna be like ten or eleven. You've got Cambridge, number two.
Uh-huh.
Number three, Oakdale, number four, Amherst.
Oh.
And number five, Maplefield.
Now that makes sense.
Yeah.
Nice.
So I thought that was interesting, we, we discussed a lot.
That is an interesting way to look at it.
Jim and his onesie out of the pool.
Imagine that. Your daughter took care of all the attendance for you this year. She was there working just about every day. Also, uh, side note, I visited in, in the spirit of Parks and Recs, I visited the new park in Detroit. And I know we were trying to organize something, the Ralph C. Wilson, I believe.
It was amazing.
Phenomenal. Yeah, I took the kids there last Saturday, I ran into Katie, who was there with her mom.
And I had been there the day before, two days before, with Shawnee and Jim and Ann.
So yeah, I just wanted to throw that in, very, very cool to experience.
Yeah, it's really interesting seeing Detroit from that side. Because that's always been the dead area.
Yeah.
You had Joe Louis, you had the freeways, you had concrete plants or whatever was there before, there was nothing there, so you never really experienced. It's really neat. And the view of the bridges and the, uh, the other side, yeah, of the city.
And the play structures.
I was watching Chris's kid flying down those slides.
Yeah, a little bit of risk in these slides, which make them fun.
Yeah.
Mm-hmm.
Right. Yeah, it's, and it's just beautiful. And all the water features and all of the, it's really interesting to look at and stuff too.
You can see there's a plan to connect, Katie and I were talking about to connect the Greenway that's over closer to like the train station, that park all the way along the river, all the way to Belle Isle, which is phenomenal.
I'm gonna take my bike up there at some point and see how far I can go, or how lo- far my legs can go, probably more specifically.
Yeah. So drop-in Mahjong is first on the list. That is every Thursday, one to four, all skill levels are welcome, and there's no RSVP for this one required. We're continuing the coats for the cold coat drive, and the collection dates are all of November, the first through the thirtieth. Oakland County Sheriff's Department is also collecting gently-used coats, any season and in all sizes. Coats are redistributed within Oakley, Oakland County, drop-off at the community center, over on the poolside, or at City Hall during business hours. One of the kids' favorites is the annual tree lighting ceremony, that's actually coming up Monday, December the first. That's at six o'clock at Memorial Park right over here. Welcome to the spirit of the season with your family, friends, neighbors, and Santa. Stay for photos with Santa, and the Christmas Village, as Commissioner Schmier just mentioned, will be on display at the Historical Museum. To tie into what Ted was talking about, the, uh, ASL for everyone, that's Wednesday mornings at nine o'clock, so join for a casual and welcoming experience with the American Sign Language meetup. This group is designed for learners of all levels, so whether you're just starting out or looking to practice or improve where you're at, no worries, come on over and there's no commitment or registration that's required, so just drop in when you can. Sing-along with David Osher, that is Thursday, December the fourth, seating at six-thirty, and the show will begin at seven o'clock. We then have Cookies and Cocoa with Santa, that's Friday, December the twelfth, six-thirty PM. Eight dollars per person, and this is ages two and up. Join in the holiday fun with Santa, Cookies, Holiday Crafts, space is limited, and under two is free. So this is one where you do need to be pre-registered. No ticket sales at the door, and from what I recall, it's a really popular one. So we've done it the last couple of years, and it's really, really cool. Letters to Santa are due Friday, December twelfth. Katie, that's a note to you. Santa looks forward to hearing from his friends in Pleasant Ridge. Mailboxes will be located at the community center and City Hall to receive your letters and include your name, address on the letter, so Santa can write back. So go on and get wishing, and this is open to PR res- residents only. We also have a holiday movie marathon the week of December fifteenth through the nineteenth. It's a holiday favorite that will be shown daily from ten-thirty AM and then also a second at six PM. Only about six more items. Half Day Fun Day, Friday, December the nineteenth, twelve-thirty to three-thirty. Join in an afternoon of fun with supervised games, activities, and a healthy snack. Fee does not include lunch. This is a drop-off event for residents ages six and older, and this event is based on the FPS district calendar. There is a holiday jazz concert, Sunday, December twenty-first. Concert begins at three PM, seating begins, uh, at three, three PM as well. The Ferndale Jazz Authority is a six-piece ensemble playing jazz standards with a swinging style that you won't soon forget. Your toes will be tapping along, swinging a beat, and you'll leave with beautiful Christmas memories that you won't forget. And members include Jordan Parrish, Matthew Parmenter, Ben Roblousky, Jude Clausen, PR's very own Harry Taylor, and Tim Brennan. Schools Out Mystery Trip is Monday, the twenty-second of December. This is a day, whole day event, nine AM to four PM. So register for this fun winterday field trip. This one-day field trip is designed for residents ages seven and older, and this does include chaperones, or the fee includes sap- chaperones, lunch, admission fee, and bus transportation. And finally, the Gingerbread House Making is Tuesday, the twenty-third of December at ten-thirty in the morning, cost is fifteen dollars. Registration is open. Make your own gingerbread house and keep it, invite friends to join you for the special event with cocoa and holiday tunes bumping in the background. This is a drop-off event for kids K through six. And as always, check the ridger, your little magnets on the refrigerator for things going on. And thank you Shawnee for this fun-filled December.
Wow.
Wow.
And that's, that's all I have.
That's incredible.
Is there, uh, still a candy collection, or has that already been?
Already done.
Already done, okay.
Forgot to guess the winner.
Signed, sealed, and delivered.
Awesome.
Two, I can say it, because Jay already announced the winner, two hundred and ninety-eight pounds, point six.
My goodness.
Wow. Who won?
Anne Kante won, and she guessed two ninety-eight point five.
Wow.
So she was just point one pound off.
Wow.
That's amazing.
Nice.
I'll have to catch up with her to give her some swag.
That's cool.
Um, any questions for?
That's a lot. Thank you.
I love the drop-in day for the, when school's off.
Yeah, but we're inviting that.
That's really special.
Kids love it, and the parents love it even more, so.
Mm-hmm.
That's amazing.
They have them away for some free shopping days.
Very.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thanks. Commissioner Perry?
Thank you, Mayor. I always hate going after Commissioner Budnick and Shawnee, because it's, it's hard to follow that act. So the, um, the Arts Council met on Wednesday, October fifteenth. And we had a great discussion about, and, you know, reviewed a bunch of different mural artists and looked at different ideas for, um, that could be used at different places around the city, including, including the DPW building, um, which is a beautiful, huge palette, a blank slate for somebody. Um, we're gonna meet again tomorrow, November twelfth, at four-thirty, right here at City Hall, and continue that discussion. And so the, the, the creative conversations keep going. Let me know if you have any questions, but we'll be here at four-thirty tomorrow. Thanks. Do you have any questions, sir? Anything to add? Okay.
All right, we'll move on to Ferndale Public Schools. With Representative.
Hi, good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
I remember I always forget to introduce myself, so Mark de Laverne, uh, we're the trustee of Ferndale Public Schools. Last month, I think we were still talking about budget and figuring out school lunches. Fortunately, that got solved, but now we're dealing with the SNAP issue, obviously. You know, we're continuing to put resources out, uh, for either ways to help, or sort of, uh, things to do, we're talking with a lot of community partners. Um, but continue to offer both breakfast and lunch to all students. Um, it's a, you know, really great program, uh, just sort of seeing it at the, the middle school and the high school, just the, the breakfast and the kids. It's just a really, really valuable resource that's offered to the kids there. Brighter news on the sports side, uh, football team finished five and four, uh, first in the OAA Gold Division. Coach Jackson won Coach of the Year, uh, so it's a really, uh, really great year, uh, some really tough games and the losses, so, uh, fantastic there. On the volleyball side, uh, volleyball team is the state district champion, um, and finished first in the OAA Blue Division. Uh, undefeated league record, uh, for the girls volleyball team. Uh, Coach McCoy is the OAA Blue Coach of the Year. Um, and they are actually playing right now in the state regional semifinal. Uh, so hopefully we will get good news this evening on the volleyball side. Girls swim, uh, high school had a great showing at the OAA League Championship. Uh, a lot of our swimmers had personal bests, uh, Amanda Pollack was one second away from qualifying from the state finals in two freestyle events. Band, uh, we've got, oh, I forgot to mention, this is hot off the presses, uh, robotics teams, uh, Giggles Pickles here worked here last year. Uh, they have advanced to the state finals again, uh, but we have another team, uh, the Electric Bacon, uh, who are also advancing into the state finals. So it's fantastic to see both the growth of that program, but also the success that they're, they're continuing to have, so. Um, I'm sure, so their brands are so good, so I'm sure that we will see, you'll see lots more stuff on social media, and hopefully they'll be here as well on that. Bond progress, um, actually just got back from, uh, National Honor Society induction at University High School tonight. Uh, if you drive by, you can see the sign is up, it looks beautiful, they've got the, you know, the Ferndale brand, the feathers are up there, it looks really nice. Uh, office is carpeted, uh, I think at some point we probably sort of tore you all down there to see the progress down there. We will be selecting architect for the next bond project, uh, coming up, uh, on Monday. Exciting stuff there, uh, they, one of the recommended, some pretty interesting views, sort of came out with some outside-the-box ideas. Uh, hopefully we can afford to build it, uh, but, uh, fantastic to see, uh, folks browsing there. On the Coolic side, continuing to have good conversations on the community center, uh, on the future there. Um, so hopefully we'll have some real great updates on that soon, um, but, um, that's continuing to, to move forward. And then, you know, as we're getting to the holiday season, um, obviously, uh, you know, being able to coordinate resources for the families who need support, um, if you're interested in volunteering, you can just definitely just go to the school administrative office and provide information there. As well as, uh, being able to donate, Blessings in the Backpack, great program again, that sort of hits all that, so. Um, you know, obviously, all the great stuff happening here, but also lots of folks that are of, uh, in the school district that, you know, this is a tough time for them, so being able to be able to show support is, is fantastic, so. Any questions? Yes, Jim?
I would just note that, uh, the girls four-by-four hundred did qualify for state.
Okay, it was not, I am now gonna have to go call the communication.
With a number of, uh, Pleasant Ridge girls who are on that team.
Excellent.
So that was really great to see.
Awesome.
It's been fun, the swim, the girls swim team, uh, been going to the events for a couple of years now, um, it's really, it's been improving quite a bit, so.
Yeah, I mean, it's just, you know, having Coach Emily do both, uh, I mean, I know my daughter, same thing, probably would not have swum in middle school, but, you know, now they're all gonna go out, uh, as well, so it's a really nice pipeline that is being built here. Uh, it's actually one of the things, uh, we need to continue to talk to, uh, Ferndale Parks and Rec to continue to build pipeline, particularly girl sports. Because I think this, we had a presentation probably about six months ago from, uh, athletic director on sort of the challenge on the girl sports. I think a lot of it's just because we don't have that pipeline, but we do have that pipeline coming in through girl swim, through Pleasant Ridge, so.
There's a lot of piranhas who are on the.
Yes, yes. So I think that's, you know, continue to see, see, uh, that continue to get better, which is fantastic.
Uh, they have, do do really well with their social media, the girls swim team, and it looks like they're having so much fun.
Yeah.
Like they're working hard and having a lot of fun, so that's really cool.
Excellent.
Built some good bonds.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, last but not least.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, DDA met on October twenty-seventh. Uh, we primarily, uh, talked about the planned build on Woodward. So Jim, I don't know if you wanna give any update, but we more or less left it. I mean, if you can think back to Mays or Cork or Knox, parking is the, the tip of the spear as far as the issue goes. Um, so I think we left it, they're, the architect, the builder, the owner is gonna go do a parking study. And DDA meets, uh, four times a year, quarterly, so the next scheduled meeting's in January, but we're more than likely gonna need to meet off-cycle. But, uh, Jim, do you wanna flesh that out?
Yeah, I mean, they, uh, the planning commission sent the applicant back to sharpen their pencil and try again. And, uh, I believe they are, so I don't know what the timeline is, I haven't seen any revised plans from them yet, so.
Okay.
Um, just waiting on that, and then, yeah, we'll, we'll proceed as, as needed with that, but I think he heard the message.
As far as ADU go, that kind of fell off the map, but there is an ADU, uh, draft resolu- or not resolution, but draft regulations ordinance, so, um, that's in the hands of all the DDA members, planning commission members, and that'll be on the docket next time. Yeah, I'd encourage anybody to come to these meetings, they're not televised, um, if you live on Cambridge or, I don't know, have a horse in the race, so to speak, now would be the time to come and give your, your input.
We'll mail letters to everyone who got one the first time around, again, when it comes back as well.
Yeah, it was cool to see, like, a lot of people came out, um, people were, I mean, cautious, but also, I mean, like, supportive of the idea of improving the space. Supportive of something happening there, and the drawings were pretty, but like realistically how it's gonna fit there with the new vision still needs to be.
Ironed out a little bit.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's interesting, uh, you know, there are just buildings in town that people have, uh, an affinity towards. And even if it's gone without any work or needs improvement, people have a feeling for it, and that's this building, so. We're one of them, so we'll see where it goes.
Yes.
All right, so.
Thank you. Cool. Thank you very much. Thank you. All right, uh, we'll go on to governmental reports.
Good evening. As we enter the holiday season, just wanted to give people some friendly reminders on some things. Things that we see upticks in are porch pirates. So if you have those items coming, kind of keep an eye on that, see when they're supposed to be delivered. If you're gonna be out of town, you're having stuff delivered, talk to your neighbors, see if they can pull it in. You know, pretty frequently when our officers are doing the vacation checks on the vacation houses, all of a sudden we'll see a bunch of packages out, and we know that they aren't gonna be back for a couple of weeks, so we'll, you know, try and store those where they aren't seen by passing public. Something that luckily we don't have to deal with a lot here, but just wanted to keep the residents advised. We enter that season where people will take opportunities, if you're out at the mall, and maybe snatch a purse or do something like that. So just keep your surroundings, keep aware, as you're going to your car, as you have all those packages in your hand, that type of stuff. Then lastly, the thing that I harp on every, every month, lock your doors. We do usually get a couple, we've had a couple over the past few months of people going in and lock car, unlock cars, excuse me. We actually had video, uh, from one where they weren't walking down the street, they actually pull up, see the car, check the car. And when we watch the video, you see the brake lights come on. They're checking to see if you left that key fob in the car, so they can take the car. A bunch of those have happened in Huntington Woods over the past couple of months. So take your key fobs out of your car, lock the doors, just check before you go to bed, hit that button, annoy your neighbors with the beep beep, make sure that it's locked. Uh, as far as the police department, everything's going well, uh, we luckily are fully staffed, we've been fully staffed for a few months now. We're one of the lucky departments around that are fully staffed. I'm sure you see our officers out every day, and, uh, let me just toot their horn a little bit, you have a great, great team of officers.
We really do.
Yeah, we, we do. They, they make my job easy, and, uh, great people, not just great officers, but great people, so. Um, I'm here for any questions that you may have.
No, just, and thank you for Halloween, I saw a lot of, yeah, presents.
The truck was very popular with the kids.
Oh, yeah.
Both of them, actually, the lights.
The lights were really fun on all the vehicles.
Yeah, we, it, it's an option that we got probably eight or nine years ago, uh, it's called the cruise lights. It, it, it's great because it just gives awareness of where the police are, but doesn't kind of give that overwhelming psychological effect of like, oh, the lights are flashing, what's going on, there must be something happening. It, it's a great night for us to use it, you know, a lot of the other agencies that have schools, you know, if they're doing football game, high school football games, it's nice to keep those on, but, yeah, uh, we get a lot of people in town for, for Halloween, and everything went very, very smoothly, so. Um, as far as the truck, uh, I haven't spoken to you about that, so that lightning pickup truck, it's gone over great. Uh, we're entering the season where we were wondering about it, we've had a few cold mornings where we get out and it's, you know, down to twenty degrees. It's operating great, the officers like it, so it's, uh, it, it's doing very well, it's doing exactly what we needed it to do, so, people seem to like it, so.
Great.
Yeah, awesome.
All right. Thank you very much, I'm here if you have any questions.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, we'll move on to the consent agenda. May we have a motion?
Mayor, I move that the consent agenda be approved.
Second?
Any discussion? Let's take a vote.
Commissioner Budnick?
Yes.
Commissioner Perry?
Yes.
Commissioner Lenko?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmier, Perry?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmier. Everybody happy, we all good? Mayor Scott?
Yes. Approved twice.
Thank you.
The motion carries. And then we'll move on to, uh, block grant.
Yes, our annual public hearing for our annual seven thousand dollars.
All right. I will open the public hearing. And I will close the public hearing.
All right, if you have any questions, let me know.
Any questions?
No questions.
So what all, what are some of the best, I, we use it mostly for senior programming, is that right?
Yeah, under the, it's a program, uh, that can be used for various uses, but generally speaking, low, moderate income benefiting programs. We haven't had any qualifying areas in town for decades. So, uh, the, uh, item that our funding goes to is seniors. So it's a use for a lot of the recreation, paying for buses for senior trips, or supporting senior activities in the community. So we send in Shawnee's time sheets to the county for the time she spends working on those for the reimbursement.
Well, the senior programming is so, like, ongoing, like, you have so many interesting programs, so that it seems like that you're able to use the money well. Thank you.
Yes, thank you. Good use of resources, for sure.
Yep. All right, may we have a motion?
Mayor, I move to approve the seven thousand senior services funding designation, the two thousand twenty-six community development, sorry, block grant, CDBG, community application, and sub-recipient agreement, and to authorize Mayor Scott to sign the application and submit the documents to Oakland County.
Sir, second?
Second? Oh, it's okay.
May we have a vote?
Commissioner Schmier?
Yes.
Commissioner Lenko?
You want it? I'll take it.
Commissioner Budnick?
Yes.
Commissioner Perry?
Yes.
Mayor Scott?
Yes, the motion carries. Mr. Manager? Got anything for us?
Um, we were going to introduce short-term rentals tonight, in case anyone's following along with that thread, but, uh, City Attorney Need couldn't be here, he had another conflict that he had to be at, so we'll, we'll bring those to, uh, the commission to introduce them in December. Uh, leaf pickup is going well, as you know, we have Briar and Davy working this year. So, um, we're learning, um, preparing for, you know, kind of, it's a trial run for what we do in future years, uh, but it's going well. Um, it's been light so far, but after this week, it should pick up quite a bit. We'll see.
Yeah, after yesterday in the snow.
Yes.
So this is where the rubber will meet the road, and we'll see who can really kind of, you know, deliver.
Yeah.
May I ask, how are they, like, organizing or seeing, like, is it just first to it gets it, or?
It's, it's not a leaf hunger games.
Okay.
But no, we're just doing, they're doing one side of the city.
Okay.
So Briar is west side this week, Davy's the east side. That was switched, loc up every other week.
Cool, cool.
Yeah.
I heard Shawnee was weighing all their trucks to see.
Yes. They do have to check in at Ferndale, so we do have data on that, so, yeah.
They're gonna run swag.
Maybe, maybe next year's contract, I don't know.
Right.
There you go. Yeah. I think that's about it.
So are they reporting any issues with people, like, being on the streets? I mean, we're trying to encourage people to, like, move their vehicles, I know we haven't hit the heavy, heavy season yet with leaves, but it's starting.
I mean, it, you know, that's just.
Yeah, it is.
It is, exactly, so. That was one of the things that we, Davy, being new in town, was doing a really conscientious job the first week, and we told him, eh, you know, come back next week, you don't have to get every leaf underneath every car, because you've got six weeks of this.
When does it end? When does the street pickup end?
It's the first week in December.
Okay, and then we sell out bags until mid-December, correct?
December fifteenth.
Okay.
Yes. And that last week, have your leaves out by Sunday, because it's not the entire week. So if you, if, if your street is picked up on Tuesday, and you put leaves out in the street on Wednesday, we're not picking them up.
Right.
Because we're not just going around chasing.
So which, okay.
So have them out by Sunday.
Was it December seventh?
That might be.
No.
It's, I believe it starts December.
Be like the November thirty-first.
Yeah, be the November thirtieth.
November first, okay, because, yeah.
November first, okay, because yeah, December first is a Monday.
Yes.
November thirtieth, okay.
So the thirtieth is the last day for leaf pickup.
It's, yeah, the last day to put your leaves in the street.
Right.
Great, and then bags until the fifteenth?
Yes.
Okay, well hopefully this cold weather has been a shock to the system, but on a, the good that it's bringing down hopefully some of my leaves, which are still green and look to be hanging on.
Last year I had, uh, snow removal and leaf removal simultaneously.
Yeah, we need a little cold to get those leaves moving.
Yeah.
I watched about half of them drop today from my mulberry. No, the oaks hold on for a good time.
Yeah, it's the oaks that's the, that the, although it stopped trying to kill me with acorns, I think finally, so at least that's a positive.
Any questions on anything else?
No.
No? What are we forgetting? Oh, um, so, nothing, never mind.
Do you have something?
I do. I neglected one other issue, uh, the MDOT shift this coming week.
Oh, right.
Uh, just to give everybody an update in case they don't know, it still will be westbound traffic, but it will be shifted into the eastbound lanes. Luckily for us, the Woodward exit will be open, however, Coolidge and Greenfield will not. So it'll either be Woodward or Southfield. Um, but that will be shut down all weekend while they prep for that and should reopen Monday morning. Uh, so you will now be shifted, you will be driving westbound in the eastbound lanes. When it goes to, when you hit I seventy-five, it used to have two lanes that would turn onto northbound I seventy-five. It will now be one, so it will be a choke point, so if you're coming from the east side, just be aware it's gonna slow down a bit, so.
Yes. So where, say that last part again, please, I'm sorry.
If you're going westbound on six ninety-six, when you come up to I seventy-five.
Okay.
It's gonna, it used to be two lanes could go onto I seventy-five, it's only one now.
Okay.
And come March, that will shut completely. The I seventy-five, six ninety-six interchange will not be open. Uh, and that will be from March until July, sometime in July. They don't know exactly when. They're hoping for early July, so.
With those other, you know, with Woodward staying open, but Coolidge and, um, Greenfield will be closed. Is that also for a long duration?
That's till the end of twenty twenty-six.
Okay, for the whole time.
Correct.
Okay.
Yep.
So if you lived in southeast Michigan for a while and can remember East Ten Mile Road before six ninety-six, we're going back to that.
Yeah, our concern is with the, the crashes that we respond to on the freeway. Uh, if you see our officers in Hazel Park with lights and sirens on saying, why is Pleasant Ridge Police in Hazel Park? That's because our officers will be going down Woodward Heights all the way to Dequinder.
Mm-hmm.
Dequinder up to the six ninety-six to get on the freeway to be able to respond to.
Oh, my gosh.
So it, it's gonna be an interesting time for Madison Heights, Royal Oak and us, um, but we're as prepped as we can be. So we just wanted to let everybody know, this weekend will be shut down completely.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, any other business?
Yeah, Mayor, congratulations to the three of you.
Yeah, it's exciting, actually. I can't, uh, I, I was surprised myself that I really enjoyed this. Uh, because I'm just not a public speaker or anything and it has been incredibly rewarding. And, um, I can't imagine doing it anywhere else.
Swearing in in December.
Yes.
State law change.
I'll swear until December.
Yes.
Cool, all right. I think that's it for the meeting tonight. Motion to adjourn?
Move adjourn.
Second?
Second.
Done. Thanks, everyone.